The meeting of the Streetway City Council is now being called upon. We will have an invocation by my good friend. And, uh, you must do faithfully my, uh, Counselor Everson. Thank you.
Oh gracious and holy Father, we thank you for all that you have done for us. We thank you for the assembly of this meeting. I ask that you would look over this great city, look over these councilmen, look over our mayor in our absence, and Father God, I ask that this meeting be blessed with your anointing and the power of the Holy Ghost, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, you call a roll, please.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Everson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Flurry. Councilman Lemon Litt. And Councilman Boe.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11th and 12th City Council.
Second. Then motion by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Everson to approve the minutes. Please vote. Motion carries with five to two outs. Uh, does any council member have any awards or recognitions, distinguished guests, that they would like to mention at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution if it would be proper at this time, if I could suspend the rules and go ahead and, uh, take that forward if it would be proper.
I'll second that motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Councilman Flurry and second by Councilman Everson to suspend the rules.
Resolution eighty-five.
Which one?
Resolution eighty-five.
Eighty-five, for my good friend Reverend Moody. Motion carries with five and two outs.
Okay, and now I guess motion in order to adopt.
Well, can we hear the resolutions, Chairman?
Resolution eighty-five of two thousand eighteen, a resolution honoring Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center and declaring June twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center Day in the city of Shreveport and to otherwise provide with respect thereto by Councilman James Flurry, whereas the City Council acknowledged the contributions made by Pastor Robert Moody, First Lady Sandra Moody, and the Holy Way Ministries family. And whereas the City Council desires to honor Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center, and whereas the Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center is affiliated with the Church of God in Christ Urban Initiatives and shares their vision to build healthy individuals, families, and communities for a successful future. And whereas the Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center implements programs that address education, economic development, crime, family, and financial literacy, and whereas the Holy Way Ministry Family Worship Center recognizes that these programs will result in measurable improvements in the quality of life for individuals, families, and communities in the greater Shreveport community. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convened that the City Council declares June twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, Holy Way Ministries Family Center Day within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, in recognition of its commitment to provide services and programs that inspire the quality of life for the citizens of Shreveport and the greater Shreveport community. Be it further resolved that the Shreveport City Council thanks Pastor Robert Moody, First Lady Sandra Moody, and the Holy Way Ministries family for their commitment to the citizens of Shreveport. Be it further resolved that this resolution will be executed in duplicate originals with one original presented to Pastor Robert Moody and the other resolution filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of the Council for the city of Shreveport.
I second. You make the motion.
I motion to adopt this resolution.
I second.
The motion by Councilman Flurry and second by Councilman Bradford to adopt Resolution eighty-five. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, would you join me in that?
Yes, sir. Motion carries with five and two outs.
Want to say at this time, we appreciate in Shreveport what your ministry has meant. I've visited your church and you've invited me. Uh, this is the church that we hope that one day Shreveport will look like.
Yes.
And I want to congratulate you, you and, uh, First Lady here for what you do in that area in the city of Shreveport.
Amen. Thanks, Director.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to?
I can only pretty much piggyback on what you said, that resolution spoke for everything that it, that it means. Uh, and I'd like to say I appreciate you, not just for Holy Way Ministries, but for the friendship that we've had for the years in the past. And thank you for helping, uh, this man to be the man of God that he is today. Thank you, Ms. Moody.
Amen. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you. Thank you all to the City Council and the city of Shreveport for allowing us the opportunity to serve this great community, to pull us together as a united family, as one. And we are what our church, uh, family says, we are a family church, that, uh, we are not just a church for one people, we are a church for all people, and we're here to serve this community, and I could not do it without the help of my lovely wife.
Amen.
I would just like to say thank you all for all of your support and continue to keep Holy Way Ministries in your prayers. Thank you.
Any other council member, any other distinct guest, anything? No? Okay. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir.
Any awards, recognitions, or?
Just a couple of things. Uh, just to mention, as I did yesterday, Mayor Todd was out on a much-needed vacation this week, first one she's taken since she came into office, and so I do have just a couple of announcements on her behalf. University Health Shreveport and the city of Shreveport Public Assembly and Recreation has established a strategic collaboration aimed at strategically strengthening, uh, clinical community linkages and improving the quality of life in Shreveport residents suffering from arthritis and other chronic illnesses. Thanks to a twenty thousand dollar donation and grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association, UHS, and SPAR will develop and test an innovative strategy and program to promote healthy living and encourage participation, improve and intervention programs offered through parks and recreational services here in the city. Secondly, we want to remind everyone, if they didn't already know, to come out to the Independence Day Festival down at Festival Plaza on July fourth. Uh, that's next week. Uh, lots of food, fun, family activities, and largest fireworks display in the history of Shreveport, from what I understand. So it should be a lot of fun. We encourage everybody to come down.
Okay. Is Mayor Todd local?
Yes, she is. She's in the city and she's watching. Don't try nothing funny.
Just a joke from yesterday. Uh, does any council member have any concerns relative to property standards for Mr. Green?
Just, if you could, I know y'all sent me a response on the one I sent you yesterday, letting me know that y'all had somebody go by, but could you shoot me an email and let me know if they wrote any citations on that one?
We didn't.
Uh, no?
No.
Okay.
Uh, there's, there's work, uh, currently going on in the living room area. Ceramic tile has been placed, front door has moved out on the porch. Uh, if you looked at the pictures yesterday, you'll notice the tile and the ceramic and everything is gone.
Can you send me that in writing? It's just, it's not going to be well-received news from the neighbors. I've gotten five more.
He was out there. They were there. They saw us, but, um, right.
I just need something in writing I can share.
That's fine.
Pretty frustrated. With that situation, not just because of y'all, but just that situation.
Anyone else? I think we discussed what we need to talk about. Thank you. Mr. Sweeney? Have a Master Plan Committee report?
The, uh, Master Plan Committee did meet on June the eighth, uh, in which we did a follow-up discussion about the joint meeting that was between the City Council and the Parish Commission that occurred on June the first. Both Councilman Everson and Councilman Bradford said they would continue to pursue the dialogue with their counterparts with the Commission in an attempt to come up with a, a, a better funding strategy for the MPC going forward. Um, so there'll be more information that'll come out on that as time goes along, and, and we hope to have something on that within the next few weeks. Uh, the other initiatives that were talked about was, uh, the, uh, one of the things that I feel like has been most beneficial, and, and I want to thank the, uh, the Council and the administration for, uh, their support of the My Government Online proposal. This was an initiative that I brought before my board, uh, several years ago when I came on board, telling them this was an opportunity for both the city and the parish to not only save money, but to provide a level of efficiency and transparency that we've never had before. Um, I've seen it work in so many other communities, uh, in Texas as well as in Louisiana, and is an opportunity to do something that will really, I think, not only save the city money, but it's saving the taxpayers' money in the long run, and providing them with greater access to the level of activity and the project review and approval process and permits and many other sources of opportunities for information to be provided to the public. And that's one of the reasons why we talked about that in our, in our Master Plan Committee meeting, and that this was going to be on your agenda today for final consideration and hopefully for approval. Uh, we talked about future agenda items. One of the things that Councilman Jeff Efferson, who's the Chair of the Committee, wanted to emphasize is that we do desperately need a progress report on what goals and objectives have been accomplished from the Master Plan. You know, the Master Plan was adopted officially back in two thousand eleven, and what's happened over time is, is often the case, some things get done, some things don't get done. One of the most important things that you did as, uh, as an official body is that you adopted the Unified Development Code back in May of two thousand seventeen, and the Parish Commission did the same in December of two thousand seventeen. That was a major, uh, a tremendous percentage of the, of the objectives and goals of the Master Plan. But there's many other parts of the Master Plan that need to be updated and to be implemented. And one of the things that Councilman Everson has asked for is a definitive report that says, what have we done? What do we do, need to do next? And who is responsible for doing those? Because it's really a team effort when it comes to the Master Plan. Not all of it is government-driven. Some of it is, is private, as well as organizational groups, civic groups that can do many things to implement some of the major objectives and goals of the Master Plan. But there's also some fundamental parts that the city, as well as the parish, can do to implement those goals and objectives. But we need to kind of bring a report together that kind of gives you that information so that everyone can understand what the long-term objectives were versus the short-term objectives. Another thing, you've heard me mention this before, one of the reasons why we're doing this is because we think it's possible that we could re-establish the Citizens Advisory Group, what they call the CAG Group, which was so fundamental to the success of the Master Plan being adopted back in two thousand eleven. That was a broad spectrum of the, of the community represented, uh, in that group that represented all facets of the community, that helped bring together a lot of the components that made that Master Plan a, a reality and gave the kind of input that was needed from the community to give the kind of guidance the Council and the Parish Commission both needed in making that decision to adopt the plan. We think it's time to re-establish that group, to bring them back, and to, it may be new faces, new people this time, but people that can be able to come back and, and give us feedback on certain key issues, and to help us monitor the progress of the Master Plan. So, that's something that was talked about and something that we want to pursue in some of our future meetings that we'll be having. Our next meeting will actually be July the thirteenth, which will continue to talk about some of these issues, as well as hopefully, um, come back to the issue of the funding of the MPC and the joint efforts between that, the City Council, and the Parish Commission. Jeff, is there anything else? Or Willie, is, Bradford, is there anything else that you might want to add to that?
I think that is pretty well, I mean, you know, one of the things that we talked about was, um, kind of reaching out to, um, the, the, um, the Chamber of Commerce with, um, some follow-ups on the meetings that I was asked, and, you know, kind of, um, working towards bringing some of the, um, differing opinions about what's going on at the MPC to some, quieting some of that down and then setting some realistic goals that we can all agree to kind of moving forward. So, we had some good discussions in that vein, and, and I hope to, and we've had some good follow-up discussions, so I hope we're able to kind of move that forward, uh, in some way. Uh, we won't know what that looks like just yet, but, um, but it was a productive meeting, um, talking about, uh, some of those, um, goals of the Master Plan. Uh, it's a good conversation, you know, the Master Plan was designed to be updated every so often. Um, now that we've, you know, we're, we are, you know, it's always one of those things where you talk about plans that sit on a shelf. Well, this is a plan that's being implemented, but like a little slower than it was meant to be. And so some of those things, you know, in like an ecosystem, if you add too much of a prey and not enough of a predator, or you add too much of one thing and not enough of the other, it gets off balance a little bit. So that was one of the reasons we talked about, we need to kind of have an assessment of where we are with the Master Plan, what parts of it are working and what parts of it are not, and, and is that because it's off balance a little bit? You know, do we need to set a different timeline for this? That kind of thing. So it's not just whether we should do something or not, but when we should do something. So those are going to be an important part of that discussion. It's something that I hope that we're able to kind of make up a public conversation that people will participate in and give some feedback on. But, uh, no, I thought it was a really productive meeting, and we look forward to the next one. Do you have anything else, Willie?
No, I, I would concur with your, with your statements in that, uh, we, uh, I mean, the joint meeting first, I thought was, was a very positive meeting. I used the term "healthy," and I got some feedback on social media about my, uh, using of the adjective "healthy," and I said that, uh, it's, it's healthy when we can come together as a, as, as government entities and, and acknowledge our situations, whether there are problems or whether there's concerns. Uh, and once we acknowledge them and agree that these are some of the areas that we need to work on, we can, we can then address them, and I think that's what we're on our way to. And I think we pledged that, uh, we, we got a sort of a timetable dealing with the upcoming budget season, and, uh, we wanted to see, I mean, at least my desire is that after the thirteenth meeting, if there's some changes in regards to the structure, uh, that, that would complement the, the support, I think we need to, we need to, we need to acknowledge and deal with that. And, and, and I would ask my counterparts on the other, on another side, the Commissioners, to be receptive to what this recommendation that we may come forward with. But overall, I think, uh, the, the progress of the Master Plan Committee, and I can acknowledge, Chairman Efferson, for his, his leadership in that, and saying that we want to, as much as we can, uh, try to, try to leave a, leave a map to where we want to go, even after this council, uh, leaves this body, so that we can, we can have some continuity in moving forward. And I think, I think resolving that, uh, that, 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 that structure as relates to the, the board makeup and some funding issues, once resolved, though, I think we'll be on our way. But, but I think the, 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 the reflection that you made, I think, will, will continue to move, move forward in that direction. We didn't ever say that, uh, when we adopted the, uh, UDC, that there would not be amendments.
Right.
We wanted to do it in a timely way, because we sort of wanted to get that, and then said, listen, it's always, we always have options to improve. If something's not working, we can improve those, and I think that's what we tried to do, you tried to do. And, uh, but I feel good about the direction we're going, and I hope, uh, hope we can get that, that joint, that joint concern addressed and, 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 and the time that you needed.
Right.
To start preparing your, your, uh, your work. Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
On the, on the UDC, is that, um, I know some things we have been saying about amending and things like that, has everything been moving forward with that?
Actually, that, I'm glad you asked that question, uh, and the fact that we're, we're going to give it to you in two parts. Uh, there'll be twenty-one amendments that will be considered by the MPC Board on July the eleventh. Those will then come to you for consideration and approval, for our first and second reading, of course. Then the other, um, seventeen or eighteen amendments will come, will be considered at the August first MPC meeting, and then those will come to you later on in August. Our goal is to have all thirty-eight, thirty-nine amendments ready and completed through the process with the City Council and the Parish Commission, hopefully, uh, by the first part of September. And that will put all of the new regulations in place that are in response to some of the concerns and, and desires of, of the development and, and design community.
Okay. And these are reasonable amendments that?
Yes.
Okay. And the CAG Group, this group was compiled of this before my time, so?
And it's before my time, too. It was created back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, I believe.
Earlier than that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was, uh, so the CAG was, um, well, it was probably formalized in two thousand nine, but there was a smaller group that was sort of leading the writing of the Master Plan that was probably put, initially put together in maybe, you know, six or seven. Um, and then they started, uh, really working in more earnest, you know, as it, as it got along further. Two thousand nine was when they had a big meeting soliciting volunteers and people to sit on committees and divided up the responsibility, and then they came up with this list of people who kind of actively met to make sure that the, uh, Master Plan was, uh, getting written, and they were, um, making sure that they, they, they each represented different kind of areas of expertise, and so they would make sure that, say, if it was things about trees, or if it was things about, um, you know, traffic, or whatever that thing might be, that this person would meet and make sure that those recommendations seemed in line with what the citizens were saying, and that they were kind of communicating well. Um, and so they got together and they would regularly meet with the consultants, um, and they really, they adopted it, and they kept meeting for like, into twenty-twelve or so, um, because I think we adopted it in twenty-eleven? Is that right?
That's correct.
Um, so they kept meeting for maybe eight to twelve months after it was adopted, and then they just kind of felt like it had been adopted. But, and at the time, nobody really thought that was that bad of a loss, because it was new and it was fresh on people's minds. But over time, I think we realized there needs to be a sort of citizen, because what was great about that group is it was citizen-led. I mean, it wasn't the government telling them, it was them telling us what they wanted out of this Master Plan.
That's right.
And so, um, I think what we sort of came to realize is that it would be good to continue to have a citizen-led group that's, that's given feedback as it goes, and that's helping to keep it a priority, and that's that, that kind of thing, you know? So, um, so it was a, it was an effective body, and that's why we talked about trying to bring it back.
Who made the, who made the group up?
I have, uh? Yeah, I mean, it was, uh, it's, it was set up, I mean, I think it was a process of the Master Plan Committee that can, kind of came up with this broad mix of people who represented different issue areas, and you can see it in the Master Plan, I mean, it's certainly explained in there. I don't think it was codified. In other words, I mean, I don't think it was something that we wrote an ordinance defining who had to be on that body. I think it was more just a practice. And again, keep in mind, it's citizen-led, so I mean, really, I mean, it was kind of up to them to kind of see, you know, are we missing a perspective? Do we need to add somebody? Should we change the membership basis? That kind of thing. But there was very much a stated goal of making sure that it was representative of the, um, you know, of the constituency of the city. You know, I mean, it needed to be broad-based, it needed to be diverse, it needed to be, um, people from different areas of town, people from different, um, you know, professional backgrounds and, and that kind of thing, you know? So it was, um, a, I mean, in order to do that, it was kind of a large group, um, but there was sort of a, you know, there were probably thirty, am I, am I about right? Thirty, thirty-four?
Yes, that's correct.
Something like that, um, members of that group. And the other thing was, you know, they were a citizen-led volunteer group, so I mean, they would have these meetings on a regular basis, but not everyone could make it to every meeting, you know? So giving them sort of a larger number allowed them to still have a good turnout at each meeting.
Right.
You know, but, but they had, they, they were productive and, you know, a good active group up till the day they disbanded. They just didn't think they were needed anymore, and I think, looking back, they were, they would be helpful.
Yes.
And I think, and I think, Jeff, if we was to categorize the involvement of, of the, um, Chamber of Commerce, I think that, that will show us that we, we need eyes and ears, citizen-driven, uh, to help, because they see things that we don't see all the time. So I, I welcome that group being reorganized.
Okay. All right. Anything else from Mr. Sweeney?
That's it.
Uh, Councilman third.
Sweeney, I hear you say you're going to present the, those amendments in two different stages. Uh, why? Why is that?
Because there's so much to consume at one time that it makes more sense to have it ready in two sections. The most critical items will be in the first wave, the ones that have been most talked about. So I'm putting the hot-button ones first, and the secondary ones coming in on the second wave.
Well, I'm, I'm sure you, you've got some intelligent people up here. I, I just want to record and reflect that I don't think that's a good idea. I'd like to have them all, but that's just me.
Sure, I understand.
And, uh, you, you spent three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a consultant on this UDC, and we went, like, some of us have talked about, we've had a long time to discuss the UDC, and a lot of people perhaps didn't join in, but, uh, have you gotten any feedback from the consultant on about maybe some of the things that we're facing, looking at on some of this? Any feedback from them?
We've asked him a few questions over the last several months, but we're not utilizing them like we would have in the past, because one of the things that happens when a consultant comes in and does work for you, then they kind of basically give that over to you for any further analysis and change. Uh, we call different entities, other experts in the field, to get their, their evaluation or their input, including Camero's, uh, but we don't rely on them to give us guidance. Uh, a lot of those seventy-one amendments that we made back, that y'all have already made, were corrections and oversights on the part of Camero's. And so I'm using them, but I'm not relying on them, because really, the, the experts on the UDC are, are actually my staff. And we, we talked to other people that have UDCs already in place for many years, and they can give us their experience and their knowledge so that it can say if something really worked or not. Uh, so that's really more valuable to us than relying on the consultant.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay.
Is that it? Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
Open here in the day, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Thompson has told me that he's going to dock my pay if I'd have announced that, uh, all the council members received your budget to actual financial report via email. If you have any questions about anything on there, please refer to me as Chairman of Audit and Finance Committee.
Got it.
Got it, Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
I apologize. I opened up today. Now, Mr. Thompson, that is nice to be added today.
There is none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have the following requests. To speak?
We do have some requests to speak on agenda items, Mr. Chairman. Um, first one is our friends from Community Foundation and Cyport, and they are willing to come up and ask any, or answer any questions, if we have any. We had a presentation yesterday, but if anybody has any questions, additional questions today, I'm sure they'll be glad to come up. If not, thank you for being here. Uh, next we have Mr. Sammy Mears. And as a reminder, please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, M one-ten, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-one-one-oh-one. Yes, I'm speaking about the A eighty-five as well. I think it's a wonderful idea to honor the Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center just as well. It will be very much worth it. This must be a place that I might not have heard of, maybe it's been around for a number of years, or it was built recently, but I wouldn't know, but I still would support it as is. The reason is? The reason is, whichever it is, I say go for it, accept it, do it, adopt it, well, you've already adopted it, who am I kidding? But I do agree. And anyway, this would be a good thing to do because it reminds me of over thirty years at my church, at Springs of Grace Baptist Church, we're very happy because we have a Christian Life Center for thirty years, thanks to the help of Maurice Brownell and Jerry Kinnington, who were chairpersons years ago, and I think it's a good idea to be able to celebrate something like this, or whenever you have something really going good for you. So I say please do this, honor the Holy Cross Ministries Family Worship Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, next up is Mr. Bill Weiner.
Thank you, Bill Weiner, number two, Longleaf Lane, seven eleven oh six. Uh, I'm here to talk about the thing on the agenda about the MPC moving to the city, but before I get started on that, I need to respond to something that was said just before me. I will ask the city attorney to please inform the council of the Establishment Clause of the U.S. Constitution, and once they have a better understanding of that, maybe inappropriate things won't happen in the future. Now, going back to the MPC, uh, Metropolitan Planning Commission, metropolitan means an area, it's, and planning is about geography and time to be able to determine what your future is going to be around you extended over time. Uh, if it was just the city, it opens the door to corruption. I've seen it in other towns, because when you put too much power in one place and you don't have the checks and balance, you can go, you can appeal from the MPC's decisions to the council or the chamber, but, uh, it's bad. It will not be as effective, it will cost more 'cause you're running two things, and it leads to corruption. I would just like to mention that when you discuss it before voting, should you try to amend it, it should come back to the public. And also, I wanna, uh, ask, uh, Jeff, the committee that you spoke about that was dealing with planning, I, you say they're still in existence, I would like to join it if you could.
We will certainly, um, yeah, so they're not in existence right now, but we're hoping that they restart, and we'll certainly put your name in the?
Any committee that, that you form dealing with planning, I would like to be a part of it because I've been trained in this. Thank you.
Certainly appreciate your offering that expertise. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. John Settle.
John Settle, Fort Tillwood. After listening to Mr. Sweeney and even Mr. Bradford about all the policies they think about funding, I think I need my rose-tinted glasses. I attended that summit, uh, at the Skybox, and I walked away with a totally different impression. First of all, a lot of our time was wasted on economic feasibility PowerPoint that each pers, each body had already reviewed. I didn't think that much progress was made. I do know, because I go to all the commission meetings, that several commissioners were upset that their key officers were not invited, the president and a few other people, and I do know the commission is still very much concerned about the application of the UDC. You'll read about this in my column on Friday, but Dan Cotton, Fire Chief District Number One, appeared to the commission last Thursday. He's trying to redo, remodel a station on Lakeview, which I understand is behind KCS Railroad. They have moisture and mold problems. Going through the MPC, it has taken him six or seven months to get plans, and he's still having problems. His costs are gonna be escalated by sixty thousand dollars because of landscaping requirements and other requirements for his parking lot. Now, this station on one side has a dilapidated old business that is falling down and overgrown. On the other side is a nice lot that the fire station mows, but he's having to spend extra public dollars and waste four or five months in time trying to get through the MPC, UDC hurdles. I see no reason that the MPC could not have all of those changes at their next meeting. Delaying it just furthers Mr. Sweeney's reign. He had one case in July for the MPC, he has three July eleventh. This week, the Bossier MPC had eighteen.
But now, and now, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize.
I'm talking about July eleventh, they have three cases. I think that all, I agree with Mr. Flurry, that all those should be presented at one time so that we could, if those changes need to be made, they'll be effectuated sooner than better. I know that we often speak the way we are, not the way things are. If any of y'all have forgotten your rose-tinted glasses, I can bring them to you. Mr. Sweeney wears them all the time. Thank you.
And I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you, John, but I think what I was trying to clarify, just from my own understanding, is you were using the comparison of the number of cases that I saw, they saw during their case, but isn't there decreased caseload due to a, a lot more cases being approved administratively now? So there are proven things that used to have to go to a meeting, but now there are?
I don't know, throw that analogy out, then. I have no idea, I just know the numbers. I do know that their agenda allows them plenty of time on July eleventh to consider all of the amendments versus part of them. I do know it took them two hours yesterday in executive session to come up with a resolution, two resolutions, one to stop an automatic rollover of a contract, and the other to have the exec committee negotiate a new package to be presented to them for a contract in November. Two hours for an exec committee meeting shows a lot of dysfunction, and several of us were in the hallway waiting, and some didn't get to stay to six-thirty. I, I don't have any idea about the other situation, and I apologize, maybe it's not a fair reference.
Fair enough, thank you. It's all public comments at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have the following executive appointments to be considered today. Mr. Crawford.
We do?
Correct. I'm asking.
Mr. Chairman, we have today?
That is today, and, um, I believe one of the council members said yesterday they may take up the other five that were presented yesterday for introduction.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
The city would appreciate that.
And consider all of the appointees that are, the ones that are under the cards for?
It's been motion by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin.
And suspend the rule? For the record, if I need to clarify, I mean, the ones that we are set to consider, which are, um, the Director of Engineering, Assistant City Engineer, Superintendent of Solid Waste, Architectural Engineering Select Committee, and, and in addition to that, we, we'd suspend the rules so that we can hear Director of IT, Assistant City Attorney, Assistant City Engineer, Spar Division Manager, and Assistant to the Division Manager.
Okay. Those are the ones you were speaking of yesterday, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Please vote.
Do we get to discuss?
This is to suspend the rules.
Well, I, I know, but do we get to discuss?
Yes, sir.
I just want to compliment, uh, Councilman Everson, I think that's the right thing to do, and, and that's, uh, very efficient, and, uh, thank you, Jeff, for doing that.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries with five and two absences.
I'll just make a motion that unless anybody cares to make a different one, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, confirm all of these appointees before us.
Second. The motion by Councilman Flurry and, by Councilman Everson, and second by Councilman Corbin, uh, to accept them all as read. Any discussion? Please vote. That motion also carries with five and two absences.
Congratulations to everyone, and, uh, and definitely, on behalf of, I think, several of us on council, thank y'all for moving forward with these appointments, these are some really good appointments, these are some good positions that needed filling, we need to keep on the progress and get that next wave filled, so we're excited.
We appreciate the council's confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
We appreciate that.
Let me, let me say this, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm not always in favor of, of, uh, of not following protocol, I think there's a reason for, uh, the layover, but I think because all of these employees was already employed to city and, and, and doing the job that they are not being recommended to do.
Yes, sir.
I didn't see no, no reason to delay, but I, I do want us to be cautioned as we, as we readily suspend rules to adopt and, and confirm people out of order. Okay? I just wanted to make that statement.
Okay. And there are no items on the consent agenda for introduction. Mr. Thompson, let's continue with items to be adopted.
Uh, there's one, Mr. Chairman, it's a Resolution eighty-four, and a motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
Motion to adopt. Second.
The motion by Councilman Flurry and second by Councilman Everson. Any discussions on that? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with five, two absences.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into resolutions on second reading and final passage. Uh, Resolution seventy-four authorizes an amendment to the agreement authorized by Ordinance Number forty-six of twenty-ten.
Seventy. Second. Moved by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with five, two absences.
Resolution eighty-one authorizes the submission of the twenty-eighteen annual action plan to the United States Department of Commerce.
Moved by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin. Or Flurry. I got a note sitting up there telling me who. Second by Councilman Flurry. Please vote. Motion carries with five and two absences.
Resolution eighty-two authorizes mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with South Central Planning and Development Commission for the use of my government online software solution and other related software to execute any and all related future documents and/or CEAs to carry out the intent of this resolution and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Flurry.
Any discussion on that?
Any discussion? Councilman Flurry?
Uh, Councilman Everson did, I, I understand on this one here that Mr. Sweeney said he developed that, my government, uh?
No, I think what he said is he, uh, he had worked in another jurisdiction that used it, and I think he was saying that he had seen, you know, that they'd done great work. Maybe he developed a relationship with them, I think is what he said, but, um, but no, certainly, this is a project that's, uh, run through the IT department, um, and something that, you know, we are very impressed with.
Do you know how long it'll take to get it done?
Sounds like they gave us timeline of about six months, uh, about six months is what they're, is what they're saying. I mean, the sooner we get this passed, the sooner they get paperwork done and start getting it rolling, but I think it's about a six-month implementation, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It'd be a six-month implementation.
You are committed to help me and Mr. Bradford on that, to?
Oh, sure. I wouldn't expect anything less. But, uh, we would, um, yeah, when we convert over, when we go to production, it'd be about a six-month cut over.
Six months, Mr. Bradford.
From the time we start, and then we will, after we go in production, we will start converting the old data at that point, but we'll already be live at that point, too.
That's great.
Okay.
So, Mark, are you, how familiar are you with this technology?
Uh, I've been involved in many of the, of the demonstrations, and the main reason that IT is involved is because it crosses so many departments, and it really doesn't affect us directly, so, but we're involved because it was involved so many departments, somebody needed to come together, schedule all the meetings, and we brought, we probably had five or six demonstrations. We started with upper-level people, then we got down to even the field workers, people who will be using it on a day-to-day basis to let everybody to see how it was all gonna work, and, and there was a couple that I think Councilman Everson and, um, Corbin actually attended the demonstrations.
And, and as well, uh, uh, one of, in, uh, one of our master plans committee meetings, uh, the MPC staff gave us a thorough, uh, review of this technology, and that's how we became familiar with it, Jeff, and, uh, we thought it was very impressive, and it would really, uh, I guess, institute a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things that will avoid a lot of person-to-person contact, and we saw the benefit of it, so I just wanted to make sure that you were sort of in the, in the process of understanding how, how it could affect the whole system of, of city, of city government.
Uh, yes, sir, 'cause we, not only the permitting and the planning and all the other, uh, modules, we're actually looking at other modules for GPS module, work order, asset management, and several other modules we're looking at, 'cause it's, it's a real cost-effective solution, especially in some situations we were where we weren't gonna be able to move forward, now we're able to move forward, and not only move forward, but offer the citizens and contractors a lot of benefits that we haven't been able to do in the past, in addition to actually being one online, real-time inspections out in the field.
Get it, get it. Councilman Bradford?
Yes, sir.
What do you mean by avoid person-to-person contact?
Well, I think they can go online and, and, uh, and see the progress of, of various work and, and to register, uh, complaints, register requests, you know, all of us could readily?
Would you miss that person-to-person contact, would you?
Thank you.
Say that again?
Wouldn't you miss?
I think Councilman Flurry is implying that this might save you some phone calls, uh, as well as the rest of us.
I think we go, I don't think that's gonna decrease.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we'll get back to it.
I don't think that's gonna decrease too much, 'cause most of our people don't have computers that connect us anyway.
No, that, but there is, certainly there are some that, uh, you know, that may not choose to do that, but I will say that this will drastically help, um, you know, those small businesses, those, um, people who are often, um, you know, having to come down and apply for a permit, you know, even, um, even just building owners, commercial building owners, private building owners, whatever it may be, I mean, anybody who's doing work on their house, it's gonna make it easier, I mean, it's gonna make a lot of it easier. It's gonna make it easier for, um, neighbors who have a property standard concern in their neighborhood to follow up on that concern. It's gonna make it easier, uh, for a lot of people to do a lot of things, so I think it's a, it's a really cool program, I'm really glad the administration has been so supportive of it, and, uh, certainly echo that support. Um, it's a, it's a great program, and, uh, would ask for everybody's support a bit.
Obviously, Councilman Flurry's gonna be the ambassador for my government online.
Keep it up with the times.
Please vote. We didn't vote?
No. We got sidetracked.
Motion carries with five and two absences.
Resolution eighty-three authorizes a mayor to execute an act of correction to a cash sale deed to include a waiver of the city's right to enter or use a surface of the property for any purpose related to the reservation of mental rights.
Been moved by the chair, second by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with five and two absences.
We're now into introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July the tenth. Resolution eighty-six authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission. Resolution eighty-seven authorizes the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association. Resolution eighty-eight authorizes use of certain equipment by the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission. Resolution eighty-nine authorizes use of certain equipment by Mount Olive Baptist Church, and Resolution ninety authorizes a mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with Red River STEM, Inc., to manage, operate, and use the Cyport Discovery Center to provide services to the public and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Some need to introduce?
Some need to introduce.
And motion by Councilman Flurry. I'm sorry, I'm looking at Flurry, the way you just said, I'm sorry. Motion by, I can't get y'all together today. Motion by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Flurry. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, please vote. Two carries with five and two absences.
Mr. Chairman, we have three ordinances to introduce that cannot be adopted prior to July the tenth. Ordinance fifty-three declares the city's intention to establish temporary construction servitudes on certain adjudicated properties for the water and sewer consent decree projects. Ordinance fifty-four declares the city's intention to establish permanent and temporary servitudes on certain adjudicated properties of the water and sewer consent decree projects. And Ordinance number fifty-five declares certain, uh, city equipment to be surplus and donating the equipment to the Louisiana State University Shreve, at Shreveport, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Motion to introduce ordinances?
Motion by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Everson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries? none, please vote. Motion carries with five and two absent.
We're now into ordinances on second reading, which can be adopted today. The first is ordinance number thirty. It establishes. It cannot be adopted today. It's postponed until July the tenth. Ordinance number, it's already been postponed, so no action of the council is necessary. Ordinance number forty-nine amends the twenty-eighteen capital improvements budget.
Submit.
Second, moved by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Corbin. Please vote. Motion carries with five and two absent.
Ordinance number fifty amends the twenty-eighteen general fund budget. It allocates funds for SPAR's operating budget.
Submit.
Moved by Councilman Emerson and second by Councilman Flurry. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with five and two absent.
Ordinance number fifty-one needs to be postponed until July the tenth.
Motion to respect.
Second. Motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilman Flurry. Please vote.
What's that?
It is April the tenth. Motion carries with five and two absent.
Ordinance number fifty-two revises certain provisions of chapter thirty-eight of the code, specifically revised in section thirty-eight, sixty-one, relative to allowing the director of public works or his or her designated to increase or decrease to require a twenty-five-foot buffer between developed and undeveloped tracks.
Submit.
Or acreage.
Second.
And motion by Councilman Emerson and second by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with five and two absent.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. We have one item on the table, and I'm not aware of any intent to pull it, remove it from the table.
None, no sir. We have no property standards appeal?
We have none today.
Are there any other appeals?
We have no other appeals today, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from office and board and committee?
We had public safety yesterday and discussed the downtown open container and eighteen-wheelers and several, very productive, and we'll be having a property standards sometime first of July meeting, we'll be announcing that.
And we had an infrastructure committee meeting last week as well. It was a good meeting because it was our chance to kind of get back to some of the regular things that we were looking at before. We had a few kind of special purpose meetings. So, the last few meetings of the infrastructure committee have been focused on telecommunications or tax credit programs or those kind of things. And so, this was back to kind of our general agenda. And one of the things we did talk about was, you know, that the state of the municipal infrastructure report has been something that's been going on for a while, and there's a lot of really helpful information in there. But sometimes it seems like we're asking staff to produce numbers and statistics that aren't as helpful as some that we might need. So, if, we'd love to get just a little feedback from other council members. I know those who are on that committee had a chance to kind of give us some feedback, but for anybody who may not be on that committee or citizens out there, you know, who've read the report before, you know, it's just nice to kind of hear a little feedback on what people might like to see out of that, so we can talk about refining it and maybe making it a little easier to interpret and at the same time, a little easier to produce. So.
And Councilman Flurry, you said that was productive as well, the eighteen-wheelers.
Very productive, yeah. We're working.
Are the attorneys looking?
And it was mentioned that you have some issues with that as well.
I have some issues.
There were several of us, too.
I agree.
Any additional communication from any other council member?
I just want to make a statement, Mr. Chairman, in regards to my good friend, John Sal. And John Sal is a good friend of mine, I want you to know, but he referenced that the, he didn't think the meeting was very productive. Then he quoted one of my favorite quotes when he said that, "We don't see things as they are, we see things as we are." And I think to be able to categorize the meeting as a very positive meeting is to understand what was the objective of the meeting. And I think the objective of the meeting was fulfilled, and I think it gave us a foundation and basis on which we can now move to the next phase of what we are trying to accomplish within that body, that is, the addressing MPC weaknesses and trying to make them their strengths. So, I appreciate John's always attending meetings, and he's very astute when it comes to parish and city affairs. But I do think we ought to be always understanding that the intent and the purpose of what we try to accomplish, only those that are a part of the configuration of those meetings, I think, have a clear understanding of what was resolved or accomplished within those meetings. So, but I welcome all scrutiny and observations to where we could at least reflect and see if things are the way we would intend for them to be as we try to resolve some of these issues. Thank you.
So, it's safe to say that you agree and to disagree with Mr. Sal?
No, I disagree and agree.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
I agree with you.
They're looking at it from different vantage points.
There you go.
Certainly respect that.
Everybody say you.
All right. Any other council member, another additional communication? Mr. Crawford?
Not from the administration, Mr. Chair.
All right, we're down to public comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This brings us to public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Just a reminder, each person that we call up will have three minutes to make comments. Please list your name and address, and be thinking about how to make your statement and keep it within that three-minute window. First up, we have Mr. Sammy Mears.
Very well. Sammy Mears, nineteen-oh-one Centenary Boulevard, Freeport, Louisiana, seven-one-one-oh-one, and I'm back again for a good reason. I said two weeks ago that I'm, I've been helping MDA for twenty-nine years now, and I'm looking forward to making it an even thirty this year. Muscular dystrophy can strike anyone, being born with it or even at any time, and there must be a cure out there to put a stop to this crazy disease. This disease is disgusting. And of course, I'm doing the very best I can to help the people at MDA to put a stop to it, because you never know when it may strike. You just never have any idea because it can happen. And therefore, with any help that you can hopefully give that could help, I believe we can win together. So, please, if you can help with any donation for this, to fight this crazy disease, it would be appreciated. And Willie Bradford told me just a couple of weeks ago, write down the names. I have them.
Okay, I got my donations soon.
Not yet, but I've checked off Arthur Thompson and Michael Corbin. They've helped today, so that leaves James Flurry, Jeff Emerson, Jerry Bowman, Oliver Jenkins, and Willie Bradford. And of course, Stephanie Lynch is lucky to be out today. But the thing is, if you guys can help, I'm available today.
I'm sorry, Sammy, I didn't hear. Who came up with cash today?
You and Arthur Thompson.
Man.
Now, don't you, don't you dare, because I remember one time when I asked a girl if she saw a lazy Susan that was missing, I said lazy Susan, and she replied, "The lady Susan moved." Don't even try that.
He's the chairman of the finance committee, so he's got the cash. Next up, we have Mr. Rob Broussard.
And by the way, Rob, I did relay your message yesterday in the meeting. I forgot to tell you that I did that.
Mr. Bradford, you please excuse me, as most of the council members that are here today are here. So, if I'm not looking there, then you'll know that my district is absent, okay? Okay, so you might want to move on over. All right, look, my name is Rob Broussard, four-five-one Santa Fe, Freeport, Louisiana. First of all, I'd like to thank the police department. I know they did yesterday, but on behalf of the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association, they've run several operations in the Broadmoor area. In the past two weeks, they've done a very effective job in catching people breaking into cars in our neighborhood. Every time they catch one, we reduce the possibility of a tragic accident happening when a citizen takes the law into his hands with a firearm. So, thank you for all the work that y'all are doing in our neighborhood. Second, as many of you know, I showed you yesterday, the first sign ever to recognize Broadmoor as a neighborhood since it was started in nineteen-twenty-four has now been placed. We will have an unveiling on Thursday morning at ten o'clock. We invited the mayor's office and the engineering department to come and be a part of that. But in mentioning that, I heard the discussions about the MPC a minute ago, and I want to share something with y'all. My brother owns Oasis Pool Company, and I'm often sent to pull permits. When I go to Bojor, it takes me thirty minutes to pull a permit for three-hundred-thousand-dollar pool. When I go to Monroe, thirty minutes to pull a permit for three-hundred-thousand-dollar pool. When I come to the MPC here to build this sign, it took me over a week to get a returned phone call from them on the, to make sure I dotted the eyes on the concrete, I mean, on the process, to pour a five-by-twelve concrete pad. Not a swimming pool, not a house, a pad twelve feet long by five feet wide that does nothing but sit on the ground. It took a week, and after a week, I said, "I'm not waiting any longer." I went to the permit department, went to the engineers department, and said, "I need a justification of why I have not been called back by the MPC." I never got that justification, but they moved the rock, and the MPC called me, and they said, "You can go on." A week for a pad. Something's wrong, guys. Something's wrong. Finally, you know, we all have issues that we confront in this city, but one of them is making sure that our business community can get help when they need it. We all talk about economic growth. It's not economic growth when builders and people like myself have to jump through hoops. If we're going to talk about economic growth, let's have a meaningful conversation and let's solve the problem, whether it be the MPC, the engineering department, whoever. Let's solve the problem and move forward. Now, I appreciate all you guys have done, you know, and all that you do, but we need to move the ball forward, and I think we're going to have to make some tough decisions here pretty quick. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
See you ten o'clock.
What about Thursday?
Thursday morning, ten o'clock AM.
Where?
Sports spectrum on Fern.
It's right there in Fern by where Frank's and Madlin's is. Wonderful, wonderful sign, by the way, at a tremendous bargain. Those who know me and the building community know I hold out for the cheapest price to get the most value for our neighborhood. So, it's a good-looking sign. I think you're going to be surprised, but nevertheless, you'll enjoy it.
And was that just for my knowledge, was that sign funded in part by our neighborhood improvement program?
Thank you, Jeff, for bringing that out.
Good, yes, because I know we work very hard to fund that program every year, and I'd like to see that it's going where it's supposed to.
And I got to tell you, Bonnie Moore and her office work really close because we said that, you know, this is something we want to use to try to be a unifying element, first one since the neighborhood nineteen-twenty-four. Let's start defining our neighborhood and who we are. This last meeting, we had, we had two speakers, Scott Hughes and Liz Swain, and I'm going to tell you, they banged it out of the park with their presentation before our neighborhood. And if I may very, very quickly tell you that several of the key points. She said, "Broadmoor's got a lot to be proud of." And when you look at it, even though we've had this little rash of burglars, you know, Broadmoor is a neighborhood where you can walk the street, walk the dog down the streets, where people can meet at the park and enjoy a good afternoon, okay? Schools, we have some of the best schools in the whole area, some of the top performers in the whole state. And accessibility, we're in the middle of everything. We can go, we can get anywhere in this city in twenty minutes, anywhere, okay? And then, but when you talk about that, they also said, "A key to the whole game is neighborhoods have to own responsibility for themselves. You have to take it upon yourselves to make changes." And I think y'all all know, in the last four years, we've made tremendous, we've had some tremendous successes in our neighborhood, but it hadn't been because somebody offered something. It was because we worked together with community development. We worked together with law enforcement. We worked together with a host of different agencies and said, "We can, we will, we must." We've got to take our neighborhood and make it what it is.
And one thing, just to follow up, I know that, as you mentioned, economic development and as, you know, we're in an election year, and a lot of people talk about things like that. I would love for people to check out, if you have not done this, the Louisiana Workforce Commission, you know, that's the site that posts all the jobs available. There are four-hundred-something open jobs right now in Freeport. I mean, people are begging to hire people, begging. We are at the city, too. We cannot get enough people to apply for jobs here. We're, you know, we've got tons of openings.
How many openings right now are in the public waste division?
Well, I don't know, I'm not, you know, I can't speak directly, but I would imagine.
I think it's over fifty.
I would imagine there are quite a few. And I think that that is true for a lot of our major employers in town. So, I would say that right now, while a lot of times I hear people say, "Bring jobs, bring jobs, bring jobs," I'm going to say that one of the last big job providers that was going to come to this market, the reason they didn't is not because we had bad roads or not, because of the things people complain about on Facebook all the time. It was because when they went to look at the Louisiana Workforce Commission, there were a whole lot of jobs like the ones they were going to bring, and nobody was filling those positions. So, if we don't show that we want the jobs we got, we ain't getting new ones. So, let's please encourage people to apply for the jobs that are open right now.
And that's the kind of conversations we need to have. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Broussard?
Mr. Bradford? Nothing?
Well, I was just going to say, in response to Jeff, I think it was revealed at the last meeting that even in solid waste, that we used temporary agencies because of some of the jobs that are available, and there are some available, that those applicants cannot pass a drug test.
I think you're absolutely right.
And I'm saying, so the level of jobs attracts, you know, I mean, the pay attracts those applicants. And we must be getting a lower till of applicants for the jobs. I don't know what workforce jobs are and how much they pay, but I'm saying, I hear a lot that jobs are available, but I'm saying at the same time, I'm looking, I'm looking at the reality of the city and those that are just wandering the streets, and I'm saying, "Why are they working?" And I guess it's because of whatever reason it is.
Mr. Bradford, can I bring to your attention, and I know you're the kind of guy that'll help solve this problem?
Sure.
You know, I have people call me all the time about problems and what can I do and how can I help them. And I'm just a volunteer at the BNA, right?
Yeah.
But a guy came to my house, and he said, "Can I come visit with you? I have a real serious issue I want to talk to you about, and I want your help." He said, "I work with the minority contractors in pouring concrete in the city." And he says, "My guys can't work or find work in Freeport because of the number of illegal immigrants that are taking up those jobs." And I said, "You know, that's going to be a tough one to crack because there's so much false identifications floating out there." And he goes, "Why don't you ask the council, Mr. Broussard, what steps do we take to make sure that those people that are working on city contracts are legal citizens of this country?" He said, "They're taking our jobs." So, maybe you and I can sit down and work together and try to find out how widespread that is, if it is a problem, and what are the steps that we can take as a city council to ensure that legal citizens of this country have an opportunity to have jobs before illegal people that are citizens that are not legal?
Well, I mean, it's interesting that you mention that because. Well, I mean, it's interesting that you, that you mention that because I think he left the room, but Councilman Flory and I met with the minority contractors, people, the president and the director, and we brought this very issue to them. Now, certainly, they denied that that was the case, but we still are doing some investigative stuff. Because again, my, my, my issue, if you remember, is that we need to increase minority participation in contracts and procurements for the city. There's not a whole lot of other opportunities out there. That's why I was pushing for a disparity study, so we can get that clear, that, that, you know, that the disparity is real, and that, and that, and that there are remedies that comes with, with instituting and completing a disparity study. But I think even as a prerequisite, that issue that you just mentioned has to be resolved because I cannot expect prime and minority, I mean, majority contractors to be, to be very receptive to utilizing minority contractors if they're not using minority contractors themselves. I'm very conscious of that, and I, and I, and that's my message to them, you know? Don't, don't, if you see an opportunity to hire minorities within your own confines and your own work, utilize them. That way, we can bring them up, bring everybody up, so that when we start pushing for more, more opportunities, then, then we, they can't look over here and say, "Well, they're not, they're not using minorities themselves, they're using illegal aliens." And I think that has to be resolved. Now, again, I'm getting two different messages, but at the same time, at the end of the day, we're going to, we're going to resolve that.
Well, I felt compelled to bring that up.
I'm glad you did.
You know, and I hope that all of us take a real serious look at this because, you know, we have these programs in place, and if we're not willing to use them to, to help accomplish those goals, then shame on us. Shame on us.
But another problem, and I'm glad Mr. Flory. Mr. Brusart just brought up the conversation that we had last week with one of the minority, minority contractors people regarding them utilizing non-
Illegal immigrants.
For their, for their, for their work. Now, you heard the conversation that we had with them, and I'm saying to you that, that there's, that's, that's, that's not a cut-and-dry issue as well, but I'm saying, we, we are looking at resolving it because they're saying that, okay, there's some, some type of work that, that even minorities can't do, so they have to utilize who they can, who's available, but they still need to be legal, okay? But I'm saying, I just wanted you to know that we had the conversation, we're looking into it, we were trying to work with the minority contractors to, to make sure and ensure that they are utilizing people because, again, the, the, the unemployment of minorities is higher than the average of Shreveport.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford, for your efforts. Mr. Flory? Oh, he's gone. Thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you for being, for being conscious of that and something that we need to address.
Well, and I, and you know me, you know, if, if I get on it, it's going to, you know, I'm going to be looking for some, some answers.
And I, I would like to further this conversation, you and I, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Bradford. Thank you, city council members. Appreciate it.
Chip Akins, 274 Prospect Street, Shreveport, 71104. Mr. Chairman, council members. I'm the advocacy coordinator at the Philadelphia Center here in Shreveport. It's a community-based organization that many of you know about that was founded in 1990 to address the HIV pandemic at that time. I'm here to present the latest quarterly report from the OPH for Caddo Parish and including Shreveport. In the interest of time, I had given you all brochures to familiarize you with our center and what we offer the community, and also the copies of the reports where I pulled the numbers from, from the OPH. I feel it's my responsibility to report to you each quarter our HIV and AIDS and STI numbers, keeping in mind that these numbers represent real people. Our agency has a current caseload of approximately 500 people. We're proud that 87 cents out of every dollar goes towards client care, and we have over 22,000 people living with HIV in the state of Louisiana currently. As of March 31st, 2018, Caddo has over 1,952 people living with HIV, and those are the ones that we know of, and that was in March, so I would, I would readily estimate that over 2,000, and that's being conservative. New transmissions of HIV through December 31st, 2017 were 123. STI rates as of December of 2017, nationally, Louisiana ranked first in syphilis, second for gonorrhea and chlamydia. Here in, in Shreveport, chlamydia, we had 2,721 cases as of December 2017, gonorrhea at 1,145, and syphilis at 56. Louisiana ranked third for HIV rates, and what's most tragic is it ranked second for AIDS in the United States. And the reason I say that's tragic is that in 2018, with the medications and prevention measures we have, there is no reason for anyone to die of AIDS in this day and age. Our Region 7 has recorded, has reported 48 people with AIDS. That is the region that includes Shreveport, and I would say the majority of those live in this, in the urban area. And with that, I've given you the major numbers, and I want to thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity to bring these to you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Councilman Bradford?
Yes. Thank you for that information. I was concerned and wondering, and I see some of the preventive measures that you, that you take and, and offer. Why do you think, in spite of, how many people access your services, do you think?
Roughly, our services, we have 500 caseload, in caseload. Now, as far as HIV testing, it varies, it's a hard number. It varies from month to month to week to week, but we offer free testing for HIV Monday through Thursdays from eight, from nine, nine o'clock until 4:30. So, we offer those tests, and we also have a health clinic that's twice a week. So, the numbers here, it's hard to put a, a number on that as far as the fluctuation goes, but our, our people that we have in care, in case management, is approximately 500, and it hovers right around that mark, a little above, a little below.
So, so those patients come to you through, through your, through your testing?
That, they do come to us through testing. They also come to us from other agencies in town. The Martin Luther King comes to mind, MLK Clinic, we work with them closely. We also work closely with the University Health. So, those are, those are the areas where we, we see a lot of people come in. Now, our people are, the, usually have other issues as well. For one, they don't, they don't have access to private healthcare for the most part, and many of them may have a mental disorder of some sort or personality issues, so that they, they tend to fall out of traditional care. That's where we, excuse me, that's where we pick them up.
You, you guys are the premier services for HIV/AIDS in this area?
In northwest Louisiana, yes. Yes.
What do you distribute, some, some, some of, I mean, I understand your testing, when you, when you distribute free condoms and those kind of things and do, and do some preventive education, where, where is those distributed at?
The condoms, we are distributed in various areas, at bars and taverns, at bars and taverns throughout town, also at a number of hotels in town that are in various areas, but mainly through Travis Street, some of those downtown areas where we, they seem to be needed the most. We try to strategically place where we see the need, where we see the hotbed and where we see the activity. That's, that's how we base where we, where we distribute.
Okay, so you sort of have a, have a understanding of where those, those diseases could be transmitted?
Yeah, we do.
And you place them in those type of environments?
Yes, because we also use, we use apps like Grindr or hookup apps that you would call that are both gay and heterosexual, and we have ads on that, and we base those clicks on those ads. It gives us a range, a very, very tight range with technology today. We can, we can pinpoint hotspots, and that's what we use to do that with. We use technology quite a bit.
Do you have services that's, that's targeted for younger, 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 younger clients, younger people?
Yes, yes, we do. We, we do have outreach for young people specifically, targeting those, those groups. We have a prevention department that likes to travel, to go to different church groups, to go to youth ministries, speak there. We also, they speak at colleges, universities in the area, as well as high schools if they can, if they're allowed in.
If you're comfortable with answering, is there a, if you was to say, the demographics of, of the parishes that you serve, demographically, what's the ratio of, of your clients in those that, in those that participate in your programs?
I would say, well, our rates generally are, are pretty much matched the state overall. We are 70% African-American black, 30% is divided up amongst others, amongst the other groups. Caucasian would be the next largest group, but that also would include Hispanics and Asians as well in that 30%. And that's been the trend we've been seeing throughout the South, particularly in, in not in the urban areas, but the rural areas where it's very difficult to reach those people. That's why we have a mobile testing unit that goes out into those urban, those rural areas to do testing as well. So, we take it to them if we can.
So, if you was, yeah, if I was to offer, you would suggest that it would, it would be those that don't feel like they need testing or, and, but that they fit the demographics, that's, that would be a more target place to go?
It would, and also, I think one of the biggest problems we have with getting a handle on this is the stigma associated with it. I think there's a great deal of stigma that we have to, a wall that we have to break down, and I think that's what keeps people from being tested, for the most part. I think they're afraid to be tested, and particularly in small towns, when you get outside Shreveport, and we have several people here in Shreveport that don't come to us because we're known, our location has been, since we've been there since 1990, we're, we're known amongst certain circles. They'll travel to a different area, say, to be tested. They'll go to Monroe to GoCare, they have a facility there, and so they would go there to be tested instead, because they wouldn't be seen here in town coming in or out of our facility.
So, you're saying there's some that say, "I don't want to know," but some do, do want to know, but they don't want to know-
Exactly, they don't want other people to know.
Know that they-
Right.
So, my last question is, what do you see us five years from now?
I'm a, I'm a half-full-glass kind of person, so I'm, I'm hoping that the measures that we're taking in beginning these reports to you is one of the things that we're doing, but also with the tools that we have, which are PREP, which is pre-exposure prophylaxis to pill that you can take, that's up to 99% effective in preventing HIV. We're also, with the condom use and offering free condoms, we are still able to do that on a wide, in a wide area, and so that is, is very helpful because we don't want to rely on just one strategy, because we also have the STIs out there. And that pill I just mentioned, PREP, does not, does not help protect you from STIs. Now, we can still cure those with treatment, and we do that, but, you know, there may come a day in five years from now when we have a resistant bug, say, for syphilis, or that's not able to be treated anymore. That's my biggest fear for the future.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, sir, I appreciate your service.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Chip, for being here, we appreciate the update. One of the things I was curious about in looking at it, you know, after having been on the council for a while, and like, you know, I'm almost done with my time here, but it gives you a little bit of perspective when you look at these numbers, you know? And it looks like there was kind of a substantial dip in 2012 or so in all the different, particularly in syphilis, but in all the different, you know, the, the different STIs that are, that are reported here. Do you, do we happen to know what to attribute that rise since 2012? I mean, is that, like, what other factors, culturally, legally, or, I would be interested to know, if there was something we could do? No, it could be, you don't know a clear answer, and it could be, you know, that was kind of the last height year of kind of Haynesville Shale money influx. I mean, it could just be the population was a healthier population in that year, you know, and, and that reflected in the numbers. I mean, I don't know, but if there is something specific, I'd love to know so we can do something about it, because you see all of these things rose.
Yeah, it's, it's tough to wrap, wrap your head around it, and, and it's, it's a difficult situation. I don't know of an easy answer to the question. I'd, I'd say it's probably a confluence of several factors that are, that are causing the rates to increase. One of them would probably be, looking at the population that's affected, would be one of those, not offering or not being able to get into health screenings, I think, is a big issue. And that's something why we started offering our health clinics and where we screen for the STIs now. There wasn't always a time that that was done, and I think that we may have had just the same amount of high numbers in the years you're talking about where it seems to have dipped.
It just weren't any.
We just weren't aware of them at the time because we weren't testing as much as we are now. We're very much emphasis on testing for STIs as much as HIV now, and that wasn't the case until just within the last year, maybe two years.
That answered my question very well. This is diagnosis, not total cases that are estimated.
Right, right.
So, okay, got it. No, that's, and I appreciate that answer, but, you know, well, if there are other things, and I know you mentioned something that we've been trying to kind of figure out an answer to, it kind of falls awkwardly between city and maybe parish law, but we're going to sit down and figure that out, and, but if there are other things in that nature that we can do policy-wise that can maybe help, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Pastor Mays.
Before the time starts, I just want to briefly say this. Pastor Mays, 10398 Moncom Road, to the chair, thank you, and to the rest of the council members, thank you for your service. Hopefully, there will be no interruptions. I've watched, I've been coming to the council for quite some time, and I've watched some people get preferential treatment versus others, but the city, the charter of the city, there's nowhere that says in the charter that you cannot call an elective official name because we are a democracy, and in that democracy, you have the right to call the individual name from which representing whichever district. So, we can talk to whatever councilman we want to. We are citizens of this city, and you all have a fiduciary responsibility to listen to those complaints from which we talk to you, concerning. So, me and Mr. Oliver Jenkins got that scraped, so that's, that's great between me and him now. That would never happen again, and for future references, if anybody else tried that, I will be telling you before this body that there's certain things that you cannot do. As long as things are being done respectfully from this podium, we would ask that the same respect would be given to all that come and not to some. Now, to my, to my comment for the time that I have, the city, I, I heard it quoted a few minutes ago, that there are job opportunities for citizens of this city, and which that is true, but we are a 50-some percent African-American city, 56, 57%, but when, when it comes to job procurement for African-Americans, we are not getting, we're talking about jobs that have a living wage, that's going to pay people to where they can take care of their families. And also, we know that we got job training facilities and stuff that's available, but if I, and, and I wish I was like Mr. John Sato, I wish I had some rose-colored glasses because in the virtual reality world, you see things the way you want to see them, but in our world that I live in, I see things for the way they is, and I see that when it comes to contract procurement for African-Americans in this city, we are not getting our equal share. The fair share program is everything but fair, and people wonder why, and some of you, I, I've been coming down here long before you took that seat, and I'm going to continue to come, until this city, due as other cities that has the majority African-Americans in the city, we ought to be able to get what is fair in the city of Shreveport. Black people, we are not begging for anything, we're just asking for what is- Black people, we are not begging for anything, we're just asking for what is fair when it comes to contract procurement for small business owners. Most people want to make it a racial issue, it's about race, yes, race plays a component. But those decision-makers from which we have, the elected officials, you all, and, and I'm saying, welcome business.
Pastor Mays, your time has expired.
Don't run, don't run business away, welcome business. I noticed that you didn't say anything, as long as others went on. And that's the, that's part of the problem. Yes, sir. That's, that's part of the problem. That's part of the problem, sir, is that you think that I'm gonna allow you to continue to disrespect. The city clerk just told me that it is at, as long as it's respectful, you want to be disrespectful, you've always been disrespectful, but you were no longer, you're on your way out. Go on to SWEPCO. Yes, sir, go on to SWEPCO. Do what you gotta do.
Help you to your seat.
Go on to SWEPCO and do what you gotta do. You have been a hindrance to this council. You has been a hindrance to this city, and we are sick of you. Goodbye, sir. You and those who represent you. Now, you don't have to sit me down, I can sit down. Thank you.
Take your seat.
You are a hindrance-
Mr. Weiner.
I was sitting here and listening to everything that you had, and there was one item that came up that I had a question on, because there wasn't enough information. It's item 83 under Ordinance's Regular Resolution, Second Reading, authorizing the mayor to execute an act of correction to a cash sale deed to include a waiver of the city's right to enter or use surface of the property for any purpose related to the reservation of mineral rights and otherwise provide with respect thereof. I've lived in Colorado, which does not have good mineral code like Louisiana. And what, I don't know which way this thing goes to, to help or hurt, but the minerals should go with the properties of the mineral rights. Otherwise, a person that acquires a property, they don't have the right to contract with a oil company to say, you cannot drill on my property. When you have it separated and the property owner doesn't have the right to stop development, you got a problem, and I've seen it. It's, it's terrible in the Rocky Mountains areas. And one of the other gentlemen up here spoke about not hiring people who are not citizens. Maybe what, he was not saying the right thing, it should be who are not citizens, but have a green card. The green card allows them to work. And the biggest problem we see in this city is twice I've gone out to crews cutting trees badly and tried to talk to them, because they're on a friend of mine's property who are out of town, and everybody on the crew of about 15, nobody spoke English. So I, I couldn't address it. So the issue is to go to the employers and make them hire, or not hire people that don't have a green card or are not citizens. And SWEPCO is the biggest problem that I have seen. And that's the two things, and I was talking to this man about his presentation, which was great, on the demographics, he didn't mention the split between male and female. But it is, it's, I think you told me about a third were female?
It's approximately 80/20.
80/20. So anyway, there are things you can do for him, because it affects the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that is all of the public comment. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.